This meeting of June 15, 2020 to order. And before we get started, I would like to remind everyone that is on the phone to please mute your mic when you are not speaking. And the same would be true after public comment. Please remember to mute your mic at the end of the three minutes, or we will mute you. That being said, could we have a roll call, Sandy?
Do we need to do the Pledge of Allegiance first?
Are we?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. We are going, we are back to doing the Pledge of Allegiance since we're in chambers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Sandy, if we could have the roll call.
House Memberships?
Here.
Ellen Bass?
President.
Engels?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Filkins?
Here.
At this time, if someone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
House Member Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Now we'll open the floor for our first public comment this evening. We do ask that if you are going to comment, that you let us know your name. And also, if you would keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hello, I'm here on the telephone. If I could go first, I don't know if anybody else is before me.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Rabikur Murphy. I'm an attorney here in Cadillac. And I represent the father of a juvenile in a matter that involves the Cadillac City Police. This incident stems from March 30, 2020. This incident stems from an issue of excessive and totally unnecessary force conducted by two city police officers. This young juvenile was tackled from behind. He was taken down to the ground. That dislocated his hip and cracked his femur in the hip area. I'm here on behalf of the family. We are asking that, in fact, we would be filing a complaint at the city for all the harm caused to this young juvenile. But I want to express my client, the father's concerns where he's asking the city council, by the city manager and public safety director, investigate this matter further and discipline, retrain, or terminate these officers for their violence perpetrated towards this young juvenile. As I've read articles in the newspaper in the last few weeks, at least, and they stated that there is no police brutality in this city, and clearly that is not the case with this young juvenile. This investigation of this occurrence started on March 30, 2020. So I am reaching out to the city council so they can take some action at once as it relates to these two officers with the Cadillac City Police. We're asking that there be an internal investigation done, an investigation done as to perhaps disciplining and retraining and/or terminating these officers. That's all I have for my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no one else, we'll close public-
No, it's Karen from the newspaper, Karen Usher from the Cadillac News. Just FYI, you all sound a little quiet today, so if you're not making sure to get seated directly into the microphone, that might help us here at home that are calling in. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
I have a comment.
Yes.
This is Dave Maynard. Good luck here in Cadillac. I'll keep it brief. I was at the Black Lives Matter gathering on the 6th, and of course, it won't be news to you that there were some armed counter protesters there, heavily armed, and doing things like revving their engines, rolling by our assembly, revving their engines, ripping us the bird, screaming obscenities. And then when we went out on kind of a loop out on Mitchell, there were several of them that were right there, you know, we were toe-to-toe to them. And I'd just like to express my concern over that. But what really concerns me is there's going to be another gathering on the 27th, Black Lives Matter, or something of that nature. And there's rumors floating around, it is on Facebook and there are rumors, but there are rumors that this militia is going to show up again. And I just want to really express my concern over, you know, essentially, you have one political group with an ideology that's showing up with arms at another group that opposes their ideology, and, you know, that's just really bad, and it's going to probably scare off many people to assemble, and it could end really badly, somebody throws a brick or something like that. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alex Marshall. I've been in Cadillac, Michigan, 2006. This is my first city council meeting, but I would like an investigation done on the city police as well. I was brutalized by the city police the beginning of the year, January 2, 2020, by the Cadillac Police Officers. I believe that police brutality is in Cadillac, Michigan, as I am a victim of it. I believe that they should be held accountable just as well as anybody else. I am asking for an investigation to be done, if retraining is possible, or officers be terminated as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no one else, we will close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on June 1, 2020. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. This is Councilmember Engels, I support.
Sandy is muted.
House Member Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we have a public hearing. And Marcus, would you like to present that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I think this might be the third hearing we've had regarding this topic. It's regarding the Phase Two Municipal Well Field project. I'm going to ask Owen Roberts, our finance director, to give a brief lead-in. There is not a new presentation for tonight, given that this has been a topic we've had before us several times.
All right, thanks, Marcus. So, yeah, this is the third time we've been together on this topic. If you recall, we were walking through the USDA financing, and essentially, because of our low rates, we were below kind of a main trigger for that program, and so we were rejected through that funding. As soon as we got that word, we contacted the state of Michigan under their Drinking Water Revolving Fund program. This is the same funding that we use for Phase One of this program. And so now we are going through that process, and they require their own public hearing and as well as the resolution that's before you tonight, once the public hearing has been concluded. So the purpose of the proposed project is to construct a new municipal water well field, ancillary buildings, water transmission and distribution mains, and to allow the abandonment of the city's existing Eighth Street Well Field. Project construction will include equipping of three new water wells, construction of new wellhouses, service building, water department headquarters and storage, water transmission and distribution mains, related site improvements, and abandonment of the Eighth Street Well Field, which is the current site out in the industrial park. So the, again, this public invitation essentially for public comments is to meet the requirements of the DWRF program. The full application will be submitted sometime in the next two weeks, and then we'll walk along the process. Optimistically, we still could turn dirt in 2020. Maybe more realistically, it'll probably be sometime before the spring of 2021 is the, those are kind of the two timelines that are before us from the DWRF. So nothing new. Again, we're only here because we're seeking a new financing source, and this is the project that we're built into, that was built into the projections when we talked about our water rates.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment, and these public comments will relate to just this public hearing. Hearing no one, we'll close public comment and move to any discussion or motion by the council.
Owen, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What's the life expectancy on this one, then? We're drilling a new well. When was the last time we drilled one?
Well, I think those wells are currently, Jeff would know better exactly when those were drilled, but I believe in the 60s.
Okay.
So 50 to 60 years.
Okay.
Yep. And the financing is 15, 20 years. Jeff, do you have a comment on that?
Jump in, Jeff.
Yeah, 1963, they were milk.
Okay, so we should get a long time out of it. Okay.
The other ones were put in, I think drilled in 10, put online in 11, somewhere in there.
2012.
11 and 12, yep, okay.
Okay. And what happened to those?
Those are still, so we had six active wells in the Eighth Street Well Field.
Okay.
There's three new ones at the Crosby site, and then there will be three new ones on the new site. And that was part of the strategy to not have six all in the same place again, kind of that separated field. That way, if something were to go on in one site, the other location would still be online.
So, okay, that's going to carry us a long way into the future.
Sure is.
Good, thank you.
This is TI. I will make a motion to approve resolution adopting a final project plan for water system improvement. Am I in the right place? You are. Yeah, water system improvements and designating an authorized project representative.
I'll second that.
House Member King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, we're ready for the communications. Sandy?
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM on June 27, 2020 for the Juneteenth celebration, and authorize the city manager, his or her designated, to continue to work with the event organizer and different closures that may be necessary to accommodate the event activity.
I believe Alex is here. Does he want to say something about it? Can he do that?
Sure.
Mr. Marshall, would you like to comment or say anything about the event?
The time she spoke was from 11 to 4. The time was actually 11 to 6. And the streets that we are requesting off is just so that we don't have counter protesters to try to drive through or, you know, rile the crowd up or anything of that nature.
So I see on the application, it does say 11 to 4. Does that need to be changed? How do you, how do we fix that?
We can just change that administratively.
Okay.
We don't have any additional concerns from the public safety director?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think the street closure will make it a lot safer because there won't be trucks revving engines and yelling at people, so I think that's a good idea. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 11:00, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM on June 27, 2020, for the Juneteenth celebration, and to authorize the city manager or designee to continue to work with the event organizer and different closures that may be necessary to accommodate the event activities.
Support. This is Councilmember Engels.
House Member Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Next request is to approve the banner, parade, beverage tent, fireworks, street closures, and parking lot closures as requested, the Freedom Festival, and to authorize the city manager, his or her designated, to continue to work with the event organizer and different closures that may be necessary to accommodate event activity.
She sounds, okay.
Organizers are here again?
The organizers I see are online. Is there anything that you would like to say to the council?
Derek Anderson, president of the Freedom Festival. We are here to make sure that any questions that the council might have about organization of the festival that we can answer. You probably have some during these times. You know, we're organizing as we have done in the past and we're able to, under the current So I guess we're going to open it up to you guys and see what questions you have for us that we might be able to answer that might stop us from having the festival.
I have a question about, I saw on the three agenda that you guys were planning on doing a beer tent, and I know the bars are open, I think, at 50% capacity or something like that, but I was just wondering your plan for, or your plan for, yeah, the beer tent.
So we had planned, as we did last year, to cover, I don't know, 75 square feet or so by the pavilion, a real small tent. We don't really try to do a whole lot with that. It's just kind of there to help us raise some funds.
Is there, is that the tent where there's a larger outside area roped off with the orange fence where people don't have to stay?
Yes, we have to double fence the area per hour license. We would have a 10 by 20 tent inside and tables set up. The tent would be basically there to cover the serving area, but having the whole thing under a tent is not going to happen.
Okay. What hours are you going to be running this? From when to when?
Just the beverage tent. The beverage tent will run from 5 to 10 Saturday night, 5 to 10 Sunday.
And the entire event are from when to when? Open when and?
The Freedom Festival itself would kick off Friday. We have, would have vendors in the park, 10 to 10, culminating with a movie at the pavilion, and we would wrap up on Sunday night. Each day would run 10 to 10, basically, culminating Sunday night with fireworks roughly 10 o'clock or at dusk over the lake as usual.
Thank you.
So I would like to express some concerns about this, that all other communities have very responsibly canceled their major festivals throughout the summer and into the fall. And so there are no other Fourth of July festivals that I have seen in Michigan. I'm very concerned that this makes us look extremely irresponsible, when the reality is that really, in terms of COVID-19, absolutely nothing has changed since, except that 117,000 people are dead in the last three months. And yet, we are acting like because we are moved into a phase where we can now start getting out of being closed up, that all of a sudden, it doesn't exist anymore. I just feel like this is extremely irresponsible. It will draw people from all over who will be coming here in close contact into our community, and so far, we have been, the reason that we are in the phase that we are is because we behaved responsibly and because we are like naturally social distanced to a certain extent. And to draw people from all over the state for three days, also amusement parks and carnivals are some of the most risky things, bars or beer tents are going to be a risky behavior. A parade where people gather shoulder to shoulder on the street to watch a parade is an extremely risky behavior, and I just, I think this is very irresponsible.
I don't see how we-
I appreciate your concerns, and we have definitely taken that into effect in organizing this event. As we have seen the relaxing of the state and the events that have happened and the diminishing factor that is happening, we feel that with the proper safety protocols that the state has outlined, that people know that there is things that they have to do, such as wearing masks, social distancing. And we will definitely make that, you know, priority in people understanding, and everybody is these days. If anybody goes out and sees people in public, they are seeing the safety protocols that everybody is taking, and this would be no different. We too are concerned with the number of people that may come, and that does kind of scare us. But I feel that we can manage the event where there's just a ton of room out there, the park is not an enclosed space, the shoreline is open for miles, the parade route, again, that's open for miles, and I do believe that people would want to spread out along there. So as I do appreciate your concerns, I think it's time to move on.
How many, Derek, how many people do you think? Do you think 300 people is a good estimate of how many people are going to be there or more?
Ah.
You know we're involved with this. That's a rhetorical question, because if we allow Black Lives Matter with 300 people, we allow another group coming in, how are we going to say no to the Fourth of July parade? I mean, you-
Well, those are all, yes, those are all outlined with the governor's directive right now, and that is subject to change, too. Everybody has seen that those have changed day to day, week to week, so those could be even relaxed more. The thing that we look at is, we are outside, you know, anybody that has been to the Freedom Festival over the last 10 years, we do draw a bunch of people, but it's throughout the whole day. There's 10 hours or 12 hours of stuff. So I don't know that we would have 1,000 people in the park at one time. We may have 1,000 people in the park over the course of 12 hours.
But as I said, excuse me, I'm afraid we'd let the cows out of the corral, because once you let one group in with 300 people, which was the count, and then we let another group in, now we're going to say, oh, no, you can't do that.
Okay, Derek, thank you for your feedback, and I do appreciate the fact that, you know, you're doing your absolute best in planning for this event to make sure that, you know, what you believe you can do will keep people safe. But I tend to, and I apologize, this is Mayor Filkins, but I tend to agree with Council Member Shippers on so many of the things that she mentioned. Other communities are not planning and are not supporting events in their community. After what we've gone through in the last three or four months, we've worked so hard to keep our community safe, and for us to be able to sit and support an event that could bring thousands and thousands of people to Cadillac, because everyone else's festivals have been canceled. And so where are these people going to go? And we can say that we're going to ask people to wear masks because they know that they need to wear masks, and they know that they need to wash their hands, but I've observed a lot of people in the last, well, two phases of the state opening back up, and they are not practicing safe behavior. And so we have to think about the people who are not practicing safe behavior and putting them in a situation where they feel like this drape has been lifted and life has been returned to normal, because it has not been returned to normal. And to your, to your point, Councilmember Ellen Bass, you know, we open the door, we open the gate, as you say it. Even if we had not done that, if the city manager and the public safety director isn't working with Alex on this peaceful protest, they're going to protest anyway. And so we, we need to collaborate, if you will, to make sure, again, that we're keeping our community as safe as possible. And I have talked to so many people in the medical community this week that have reached out, and they're very concerned that, you know, they see the advertisement on Facebook and that the event is already moving forward, and how can we let this happen? And so I don't tend to go against too many things to, for the community to be happy, but I can't support this event this year.
And a festival is a different thing than a protest march. A festival is not, according to the governor's order, the limited number of people outdoors, which by the way, is 200 still, is, I believe, I may be wrong, but I doubt it. That is not the case for First Amendment activities, which a peaceful protest is a First Amendment activity. This is a festival. This is a festival with carnival rides. This is a festival with a parade, and it sounds like you've never been to a parade. If you think people are going to social distance, you throw a handful of candy and you have kids just all over it. This is a planned festival with music and a beer tent, and I just, it is not the same thing.
And again, I, this is Mayor Filkins. And again, this is Mayor Philkins. You know, I absolutely want our community to celebrate the Fourth of July. But I think that we have to be wise in how we choose to celebrate. And we can celebrate in small groups and we can celebrate with people who we know are responsible and we are doing the social distancing that we need to do. And I'm not for a second saying not to celebrate in our community. I just don't think we should be doing it at a festival in a city park.
This is Councilmember King. I think we have to be very, very careful. Our job as council, if people properly apply for permits and staff has vetted it to say that what has been applied for is within the governor's restrictions, is allowable behavior, is allowable gathering, it's not up to us to judge what the purpose of that allowable behavior is. That gets into blocking free speech. That's saying that the Freedom Festival that celebrates the Fourth of July for the United States is a different form of speech or expression than the Juneteenth celebration, which I think is important. The Juneteenth celebration could have as many people and could gather as many, and we haven't asked the same questions about that in our approval of that as we are in this. You know, one person's festival is another person's protest. It depends on how you look at it. If this festival has been vetted, and I'm looking over at Marcus, and there's no violations of the current governor's order and it meets all appropriate guidelines for people to gather to do that, then I don't think we can give a judgment where some of us think freedom, celebration of freedom is not okay and celebration of Juneteenth or whatever other holiday is okay. I don't think you can do that.
And just remember, I am sorry, go ahead, Marcus.
Just trying to add some clarification if I can. And I do apologize if it sounds like I'm yelling. I'm not yelling at anybody up here. I'm trying to have my voice carry into the microphone. So under the executive order 115 from our governor, section seven of that order limits the congregation of public gatherings of people that are outside of a single household by type of venue space. So as a, for instance, for concert venue spaces, it limits the public gathering to 25% or up to 250 people, whatever is the smaller. For outdoor sporting venue spaces, as another, for instance, it limits that to 25% or 500 people, whatever, again, the smaller may be. The Cadillac Performing Arts Pavilion space has never been rated to give us a specific data point as to how many people could actually congregate there. So, you know, I could sit here and tell you that you could have 1,000 people at that pavilion and then therefore 25% of that's 250. Or I could sit here and tell you that 500 is a more reasonable number. And then obviously 25% of that is a lot less than 250. However, section eight, which is a separate section of the order itself, says unless otherwise prohibited by local regulation. So it's not taking away the control from the local body. That's the first thing that that means to me. So unless otherwise prohibited by local regulation, outdoor parks, like the city park, like the lakefront park, and recreational facilities may be open, provided that they make any reasonable modifications necessary to enable employees and patrons not part of the same household to maintain six feet of distance from one another and provided that areas in which social distancing cannot be maintained to be closed. And again, then it says it's subject to the guidance issued by the Department of Health and Human Services. And so what's important about that clause is that it doesn't take away the local control or the local authority of the local city council to do what it wants to do. But what it does say is that it doesn't limit the public gathering within our public parks to any specific number. So as of the order is written today, as we're sitting here now, and this can change by the time this meeting is over, but as we're sitting here right now, the limitation on the gathering of people is focused in on specific venues that carve out public park spaces. Now Cadillac's public venue spaces are nestled basically within or adjacent to our public park spaces. So if the council is looking for some guidance in terms of, you know, what does the order say and how do we correlate that to whether or not this event is somehow permissible? You know, I can tell you that it's all a little bit ambiguous. I think the city attorney might echo that and certainly Mike can tell me I'm wrong. But, you know, there is a, there is a good, I guess, argument to say that you can have as many people gathering subject to the social distancing guidelines within your public park spaces as essentially can fit. And therefore, this type of an event or festival could be permitted unless otherwise the local body chooses not to, such as what the very first sentence within this, you know, within this section provides for. You know, in terms of the Juneteenth event, the event that council considered, you know, just a couple of moments before, you know, it's being billed, if you will, as both a peaceful protest and a celebration. If you look at what it is, you know, sort of the nature of the event itself, you know, it's, I would also define it as a festival type of event, just as I would, you know, the Freedom Fest, you know, it's a celebration. So, you know, it becomes, dare I say the word dicey, but it becomes dicey when you try to look at, you know, approving, you know, one versus the other. It's not fair to either organizer, in a sense, to try to look at it that way. I think you really need to look at them as individual and independent functions and whether or not, even though it could be scary in terms of the type of crowds that you might get here because of a variety of reasons, like there aren't any other Fourth of July celebrations occurring necessarily within a stone's throw. You know, the responsibility is upon the organizer and is upon, you know, the health department or the enforcement agency to ensure that, you know, that the vendors are doing what they're supposed to be doing and that the crowds are doing what they're supposed to be doing. But certainly, this is not an easy decision if you're trying to really look at how you manage something that you believe is truly going to be well outside of the realm of a safe gathering. And Mike, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that or if I covered it?
No, I think that pretty well covers it. The one thing that I would echo is that the city is prevented from regulating based on the content of the speech, right? So when we talk about the number of people being at either one of these events, that would be a relevant question for both, not just for one or the other. And when I look at at least the events to be held for both, there are similarities in both, where you're going to have music, vendors, selling of products, speeches, I, you know, I think it's incumbent on the organizers and people who attend to follow regulations implemented by the CDC and Department of Health and Human Services. I will say that I think the local regulation under paragraph eight is pointed more toward local health department regulation than actually local city regulation, although I will admit it's not really clear on what it is that they're talking about. But so the local health department certainly could have an additional rule or regulation that might define things differently than what the city otherwise can define it as. But I don't want the city to regulate events based on the content of the speech and whether it finds one to be more important than the other. Because that we cannot do.
And that, of course, is not my intention. My intention is the number of people that will attend. Do you really think that people are going to come from across the state to have a Juneteenth celebration in Cadillac when it's not even Juneteenth? And/or how many people versus how many people are going to come to a Fourth of July celebration?
But we had a lot of people from out of town for the BLM movement.
We had mostly local people.
I lived here my entire life and I'd debate that point.
This is Councilmember King. I think there comes a point, too, where we have to let people make their choices, adults in a community. And I agree with Mr. Homyard that we would expect people who attend to follow regulations. And I would assume council membershipers that if people had the concerns you have, they will not attend that event. But I am concerned that we have made a judgment in relation to the festival the day before that it won't have many people, it won't have the crowds. I don't think that's our job. Our job is if the proper permits have been taken out, if they meet the criteria and the law, and they're appropriate, then we approve them. We don't put our personal judgment on what the content or purpose is for that event.
This has nothing to do with content or purpose. My concerns are specifically health issues. Nothing has changed since the beginning of the COVID-19, except that there are fewer cases daily. They still have 117,000 people dead in three months. We have no vaccine. There is no effective treatment.
Then we should not do any festivals at all. If that's your position, then everything should be denied.
And within the guidelines to distance six feet apart, the types of activities that are listed here are inherently, I'm not going to say anymore, anyway, it is not based on, good grief, are you saying that I am opposed to a Freedom Festival? What kind of insinuation is that?
The insinuation I'm making is none of us should put our own judgments on that as long as the organizers have followed proper procedure and have taken the steps that are required to take. And we have to accept that people are going to have the intentions to follow the CDC recommendations. Otherwise, we're imposing our own judgments on the event.
It's our responsibility as electeds to consider the health and well-being of our community. That's all I'll say.
So this is Councilmember Ingles and I, you know, I.
Can I?
No, hold on a second.
No.
This is Councilmember Ingles. I did, you know, approach this, I think, from a public safety perspective. That is something you have to consider. You know, but when I thought about it, I know the carnival is already here, the bars were open, our restaurants opened before the county south of us. Those people all came up here to eat at our restaurants. Protests are happening all over. And I do think the people who came here for the protests, whether it was the militia people or the Black Lives Matter people, I do think people traveled to get here for that. You know, there was 189 new cases of the virus last Friday. That's down from 2,000 cases two months ago. I'm not saying the pandemic is over. The virus has not stopped spreading and the actions that people take can still endanger people. But I've, and this is probably not popular, but I've been pretty happy with what the state of Michigan has done. I've appreciated the phases. I think we've done the right things at the right time. And if the governor's executive order isn't outlawing this, then I'm inclined to agree that we should allow it in case, unless something changes between now and July 3rd. In that case, I would expect the organizers to do the right thing or the city then to enforce a change in executive order.
So Marcus, you're thinking that the executive order allows this?
So I wish I could say yes or no. But the problem is that the executive order doesn't specifically say yes or no to public gatherings or festivals. It just gives that limitation to people at the venue space without any limitation to people in park space. So, you know, if we're going to have jazz in the park, if arguably we want to say that the pavilion can hold, you know, 250 people under the governor's order as it's written today, then jazz in the park can still happen. If we're going to have, you know, a fireworks show and we know that, let's just say, 2,000 people show up for that, the governor's order says you have to socially distance with those that are outside of your household, but otherwise go ahead and enjoy, you know, whatever it is that you're there for as long as it's in a space that's identified as a park space. So it doesn't get into specifics in terms of, you know, it doesn't get into specifics in terms of the type of use. You know, we can, you know, you look at the order, it talks about employees, you know, it makes me think about municipalities that might have like public pools and other, you know, recreational spaces. And basically, this is the, you know, the statement that would allow for those types of uses to open up like beaches and whatnot, you know, telling you, go ahead, you know, still go to the beach, still go to the pool, but you got to socially distance with those that are outside of your household. And there's no, you know, again, there isn't any limitation to the number of people that are allowed to congregate at the beaches, for instance. And I am speculating what the intent of that clause is. That's number eight. It's section eight within order 115. I can't tell you specifically because it doesn't say we can meet for Fourth of July festivals. You know, there is a clause, and forgive me for not knowing the number offhand, I saw it in other orders, I'm just assuming it's also in 115, that basically is an exemption for, you know, demonstrations. It says something about, you know, you always, of course, have the right, you know, to meet under the constitutional's First Amendment right for freedom of speech. And then it doesn't have any limitation to the number of people that can get together. So, you know, it does not provide crystal clear guidance for us at the local level, but it certainly gives the local level the ability of regulating how you best see fit to do that. You know, so I think, you know, as you battle with something like this, where you know that in years past, especially if the weather is great, you're going to have a lot of people coming here, whether they're locals or whether they're from out of town, a combination of both. You also know this year going into it that, you know, other area festivals are not happening. So you know that there's a good chance you're going to have even more people coming here. You still have to balance that with, you know, what the order is as it's written today. And, you know, the track record in a sense of these orders is that every week or two weeks, they seem to get loosened up even more. So, you know, I can't sit here and tell you that it'll never get tightened up again, but, you know.
Will it keep doing stuff like this?
From June 15th to July 4th, it could, it could change, you know. So it's hard to, it's hard to give you the exact guidance that you're looking for other than what I can read to you that was in the order. And what I read to you basically says, well, sure, it's limited to a certain number of people at a specific place, but in other places, there's no limitation. You know, it's, so it's difficult, you know, it's difficult to give you that clear guidance. And I understand that you're struggling with a lot going around, how do you do it? But I think the city attorney's guidance is probably the best.
I think we, I don't know, we've heard a lot. It's okay to have the Juneteenth festival. It's okay to have this festival. We either have to choose to approve it or not approve it.
Right. I just want to say one more thing about my line of thinking there because I think as I watched, you know, the protests that have been happening, because I've been thinking about the fireworks festival since they made the announcement four weeks ago. And when you watch, you know, the crowds of people in the street, you know, probably two thirds of them are wearing masks and none of them are all that far apart. And when I look at, you know, they're out there in the sun, they're all outside, that looks a lot like what the fireworks crowd looks like. You know, I think when you look at how the festival goes, there's, my experience with it is there's never more people, you know, along that line, along the shoreline or park than when the fireworks are happening. You know, and I haven't, you know, I haven't seen the data or the articles or the reports of outbreaks related to the protests in the major cities that people are definitely traveling to. Like I said, two thirds of the people are wearing masks, they're happening outside. And that crowd looks like the crowd will look watching our fireworks. So that was also part of my thinking.
Mike?
Yeah, I just want to correct one thing or make sure that it's clear, and that is the city is not holding a festival. The city is issuing permits for use of public parks and public facilities. And that's why if the council is going to approve it, then I would approve it subject to compliance with all executive orders, CDC and DHHS guidelines in terms of social distancing, mask wearing, et cetera. And then it becomes, as it is in all instances under the executive order, incumbent upon people to follow those rules. It's not the city that's holding this event. You're just authorizing a permit for people to gather for an event. It's not the city that's holding this event. You're just authorizing a permit for people to gather for an event subject to all of those rules that apply.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to approve this festival. Subject to all of the guidelines set down by the state, the recommendations of CDC... What else did you say, Mike?
Compliance with all executive orders and Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
In compliance with all executive orders and Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Guidelines and recommendations and, yeah, if you could do it that way, then, fine.
I'll support. That's Councilmember King.
Councilmember Alamois?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. I would just like to add that I think that that was a very important discussion. I want people in the community to know that we're being thoughtful about the work that we're doing here at the city. And I think it needs to be a really clear message. I just want the community to continue to hear that COVID hasn't gone away, so please be very careful. And Sandy, that takes us to the appointments this evening.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the reappointment for Robert Gammons to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for a five-year term to expire on June 15th, 2025.
I'll make that recommendation to reappoint Robert Gammons to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for a five-year term to expire on June 15th, 2025.
Support. This is Councilmember Ingles.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alamois?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Under the manager's report this evening, we have just a couple of items. First one is bids and a recommendation regarding Shelby Street Improvement Project. This is between Cass and Chapin Street. The lowest bidder was Dunbar Excavating Inc. in the amount of $418,727.50. The recommendation, as is customary, is to add a contingency amount, in this case of 15%. That would bring the total recommended award to a total of $481,536.62. Also wanted to just reference with the City Council that Shelby Street has been deeded back to the city and was recorded last week at the Wexford County of Deeds Office.
I will make a motion to award the contract for the Shelby Street Improvement Project to Dunbar Excavating for the bid amount of $418,727.50 and approve a 15% contingency for the city engineer. For city engineer approved field changes in unit quantity or scope due to final design unknowns in underground municipal construction, bringing the total award amount to $481,536.62.
I'll second.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alamois?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Next on the agenda is COVID-19 update. This is a summary in part from our District Health Department Number 10. As of late yesterday afternoon, there are a total of 403 confirmed cases, including 16 deaths within the district's entire coverage area. Within Wexford County, the breakout is 13 confirmed cases and three deaths. Additionally, there have been 221 recoveries within the district's area. And then the local or the regional breakout for Wexford County is nine. Operationally, as of today, our city operations are back up and running to what I'm calling sort of our new normal. Our city municipal complex is open again for in-person public visitations. We do have a variety of protocols in place for the general public as well as for employees as a part of our COVID-19 response plan or operational plan. Additionally, as I said, sort of a new normal, this is the prime example of what is still different. Under the Governor's Executive Order 2020-75, virtual or remote meetings are still allowed until June 30th of 2020. I do not know if it's going to simply expire or if it will be extended. However, due to the space restrictions that we have within specifically these facilities, bringing in members of the public or even additional staff while still trying to maintain the proper social distancing guidelines would be nearly impossible, which is why the members of the public and other staff are joining us remotely versus being allowed to be here in person. This currently is the last regularly scheduled council meeting under that provision. The next regularly scheduled council meeting is the third Monday of July. And presumably, unless something changes, if the order expires, we'll then all be meeting here as normal without a go-to-meeting-type platform active. So public would be here in person as well. But obviously, if something changes where it's extended, we'll let you know. Just more of a courtesy, as you will, as our region specifically is beginning to reopen, just reminding people to please be courteous going into different stores, restaurants, bars and other places in the public. Be mindful that some people around you might take offense if you're not wearing a mask. I know that the governor's orders do allow for people that have medical conditions to not wear them, but you should try to do so as best as you can. Additionally, especially when visiting, you know, restaurants and bars within Cadillac or within Region 6 or Region 8, we need to be mindful that the proprietors of these places are under a lot of stress. There are regulations in place that require them, as for instance, to limit capacity to 50% of normal seating. There are regulations in place that require that they have PPE available and that they're wearing it. There's regulations requiring, you know, that customers basically wait in their cars or outside of the establishments if you're waiting for a table and not just congregating inside. And so, you know, these add a lot of additional pressures to everybody. And I think it's important that people know, especially when they're visiting Cadillac, it's not necessarily reflective of our community as a whole, but rather the things that we're having to do in order to be in compliance. There's a whole list of provisions that whether you're visiting a restaurant or you're a restaurateur yourself, you can very easily find online at michigan.gov/coronavirus. And that is the end of my COVID update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then that takes us to the adoption of a resolution this evening.
Yes. Owen?
Okay.
You're on.
Thank you. So we find ourselves very close to the end of yet another fiscal year, which is hard to believe. It's been an interesting couple of months, I know. Most of the news that you'll see before you in the budget amendment tonight, though, is good news. So there are some additional expenditures, many of them more than covered by revenue as well. So we'll just walk through each page of the four-page attachment to the budget amendment. So on the revenue side in the general fund, just wanted to recognize and point out the fact that we do have some additional revenues primarily from the two top sources, the Local Community Stabilization Authority. This is the authority that was established to pass along the payments for the personal property tax reimbursements. And so this has been in excess of our budget for, really since its inception. This year, it's over to the tune of $367,600. So in conversations with Representative of the MML, who's very involved in discussions related to this, he did confirm that this is not something that you should build into your annual operating budget because it is going to be whittled away at. And over the next few years, we'll kind of settle into what we can rely on in terms of annual budgeting for this. But at this point, this is an amount that will really serve us well in terms of just solidifying our reserves. Charges for services was up unexpectedly this year just based on the new regulations to accept applications for the marijuana licenses. And so we did receive 14 of those applications. A portion of that is a non-refundable application fee, so that's what this represents. And then prior to interest rates really dropping, we were already over what our anticipated annual revenue would have been for that. So we're going to recognize some additional revenue for that. So really, that's revenues in excess of our original budget to the tune of $445,600. Going through the expenditure lines, under the City Council Cost Center, we need to appropriate some additional funds. We've done a lot of publications this year, and there has been some increase in cost of those. So we need to make sure we appropriate some additional funds for those. On the Financial Services Department, we did have two employees retire during the year, both from the Financial Services Department. And so we need to appropriate the funds at the end of the year to cover those final benefit payouts because we're long-term employees. And again, we do have some reserves set aside to fully fund those costs. So this won't come out of our general reserves. We do have a reserve set aside for those who remain eligible for some of those final benefit costs. Under elections, we did have some additional costs this year with the May election and ordering some additional supplies and things for that. The good news is we'll be reimbursed for that, so we need to increase the budget, the appropriation for elections by about 6,000. But we have applied already for reimbursement that we're expecting. That should be just short of $6,900. So we'll get a little bit more even than what we're increasing our appropriation. But this is based on actual expenses for the election that we'll get reimbursed for. Under the engineering line, we have 25,000 set aside for contract engineering services, and we need to get a little bit more than that. And these are for services that are outside of design of a particular street or something that can be assigned to a specific project. These are general things like, you know, curd cut permits and answering general questions and things like that. So. Page two, under Community Promotions and Sidewalks and Alleyies, both are very similar. This accounts for the costs of our DPW crew. And so their work is assigned and budgeted for along, I'm going to say, 20 or 30 different line items that they may work in based on the way that we cost these out. So this did increase the budget in the general fund somewhat, actually rather significantly. 27,000 in community promotions, sidewalks and alleys, about 31,000. There will be corresponding relief in other sections of the budget, primarily in the street fund because labor that is classified here then isn't being classified somewhere else. So it's still a finite amount of labor that's being classified across the budget. So that takes care of the general fund. And again, the good news on the general fund is we had anticipated prior to this with the original budget and the first budget amendment that we would use about 672,000 in reserves. And again, if you'll remember, that's mostly because we had sufficient reserves to pay cash for a fire truck, which was 600,000. Now, we're going to use at most 319,000 instead of 600,000. And so again, that extra revenue will really allow us to protect our reserves, which is especially important as we enter kind of some unknown here in the next number of months. So that's the general fund. On page two, both the 2016 Geo Bonds Debt Service Fund and the Major Street Fund are related. So we have the debt that we issued for street construction in 2016. And for some reason, I just simply underbudgeted by about $1,800. So I want to make sure we clean up that appropriation. And those funds will come from a transfer from the Major Street Fund. And there are sufficient funds in the Major Street Fund to cover that $1,800 in interest. So wasn't a big miss, but just underbudgeted slightly. Under the Market Capital Projects Fund, the market, this has been a capital project fund that's existed just for the term of what we've had for construction on the market. And as of the end of last fiscal year, there were some funds that were remaining for this project. And so those funds, basically the expenditures this year were for the final draw from the general contractor on the project. We had to replace one light post. These funds covered the heating system upgrade that we did in the spring, which has really improved that system. There were a small amount of final soil removal costs, and there does still exist $4,000. Most of those will probably be used for recognition materials. We also have some grant funds that we anticipate still coming in for that. And so we're probably going to put in some cameras for those just as an asset protection, again, like we've done in other locations. And then we would anticipate there will still be some funds to set aside in case we need to do some repairs or some additional work at the market.
Different fiscal year, though, for that.
In a different fiscal year, yeah, not for this fiscal year.
What locations, Owen?
What's that?
What locations for...
Mostly, we would anticipate reserving it for that site down there. Yep.
Better cameras?
And it's not going to be a ton.
Better cameras than we've had in the past?
Well, just cameras that we haven't had in the past. So we had cameras, you know, that we put in 15 years ago or something, and those never really functioned well.
They weren't good.
We have cameras now at the new Kenwood Bathroom. The both bathrooms on the lakefront, the one that got vandalized, and so we put some in there. That also covers the playground here. And the pavilion has cameras, and those are really nice cameras that provide usable video.
The other ones were not good.
Yeah, no, not at all. Even worked at all.
No, I know.
No, these have been very good.
Thank you.
Last page, the Trailhead Capital Projects Fund. This is to cover the final design services from an engineering firm for that project. I anticipate this one is going to go up to bid any time, and there are funds on hand to cover those costs. The IT Fund just had several items that were in excess of the original budget. Contractual Services, these services were rebid last spring. And this is our contact track with IT Wright that continues to do a great job for us. They were the low bidder by far, but their bid was quite a bit more than it had been in the previous contract. So we just need to put in some more funds for that. Software and Consulting, that covers mostly licensing fees. And we are seeing a lot more of our services, like our reporting for public safety and those kinds of things, are going to a more cloud-based system. And so instead of investing heavily upfront, you kind of have more of an operating item going forward. So that's what that is. And then just a slight increase in depreciation to cover the server replacement project that will depreciate over about five years.
So Owen, can I ask a question? On the contractual services, that's almost double.
Yeah. Yeah. So when they bid it last year, and again, the advantage now is... Yeah, so they, when they bid it last year, and again, the advantage now is, you know, they knew how far below they were in their previous bid, so that makes a little bit of a difference. And then they've built in some additional services to that contract, so they're providing kind of a overall, almost like a executive CIO services, the virtual CIO services they call, more of a management-level involvement where they come and meet with me, you know, quarterly.
But is that what?
And then additionally, I'm sorry to cut you off, but the important part of the answer is that we also were paying for some storage and some email monitoring and a few other things that they rolled into the contract. So, the contract didn't double, it probably went up by eight or $10,000. And that was just based on, you know, this is the third time that we've bid this contract over the last about 14 years.
And Mayor and Council, if it helps, and Owen will probably correct me on the number, but prior to this specific vendor, we were paying, I want to say, more than double the number, the amended number here. We were in the $60,000 to $70,000 a year range for services, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Prior to that, I had a full-time employee.
Right, okay.
I recall being so shocked at their bid. It was like, what? Take them!
And they were still, I mean, half or a third of what other bids.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, good question. The final item is in the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund, and again, this is a good news item, really. The Brownfield had received 100 percent grant from the Michigan's Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, Eagle, and this helped provide site remediation activities when it was the former Olson's Grocery Store. So, this helped with all of the testing and identification of the contamination and all of the basic overall activities that were required to take care of that site so that it could be redeveloped once more. That grant originally was about $250,000, now it's up to about $500,000, but this is all that we've spent so far, and it will continue to help as the final building is torn down, and then all of the contamination remediation, additional activities that need to happen with that will take place. And again, this is 100 percent grant, so that was a good thing. And that's it. Again, this is the final meeting of the fiscal year. We do try to minimize the number of these budget amendments that we do, and again, it is the appropriation of funds, so requires a full fiscal.
Okay. I will make a motion to adopt the resolution amending the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2020 as presented.
Support, this is TI.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. This time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Rule, same as the first?
I'd like to speak, Bill Barnett here.
Hello.
I'd like to speak if I could. Is this public comment at the end of the meeting?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for having public comment at the end. I'd like to express my disappointment tonight in your decision to spend $418,000 on a closed, a private road, a city vacated, to private property owners. That road is their responsibility, and that should have been paid for by private dollars, not public dollars. Cheltenham Street, by the way, is much nicer, even though it's been closed and not maintained, than Simpson Street that I live on. I just think you're miscalculating money. $418,000 out the window for a private road that was their responsibility, that's a big mistake and another financial error by the city. I'd ask you to reconsider doing that as well as proceeding forward with the $1 million that you've thrown at the project, Philops Project. Thank you for your time.
Not hearing anyone else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order. If anyone has anything to say, Marcus?
I do, Mayor, members of the city council. As I think a lot of folks have seen, we have a lot of geese around Lake Cadillac, and normally, we would be in the midst of a removal program, as we've done customarily throughout the years. This year being different than many we've ever experienced, the Michigan Department of Natural Resources has essentially paused for this year, that program, and has returned or refunded permitting monies to the contractors that cities such as ours would be working with to go and collect and remove the geese from the public waterway and public areas around our lake. What that means is that this year, there is no program that we're able to do, no official program at all that we're able to do, and we kindly ask people to, you know, be careful where you're walking. Obviously, we're going to do everything we can to be able to clean up messes when we're able to, but frankly, we just don't have that type of equipment either, so it's going to be quite an interesting, you know, summer season with all of the geese population here. We're also concerned that next year might be compounded in terms of the number of geese, but we're hopefully able to get the proper permits next year through the DNR and be able to remove them accordingly as we've done in years past. So, I just wanted to say that very publicly. We had a program, we had a contractor that was gearing up and ready to go, but it was pulled from us, so.
Parks Department?
I'm sorry?
Parks Department, clearing the sidebar? Is that still being done?
Well, if it was being done in the past, then it would be done in the future, but I know we don't have, you know, an automated tool necessarily.
No, it's an old-fashioned one.
Right.
It's called a shovel.
Right, it's called a shovel, so.
Marcus, is anything being done to monitor water quality? Because the problem with multiple geese is not just their droppings on the sidewalk, but in the water and E. coli in the water, so.
So, I can't tell you this evening what that testing routine is, but I do know that water quality is monitored and would be continued to be monitored accordingly.
If no one else, we need to go into closed session this evening, so if someone could make that motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Michigan Case Law 15.268A to consider periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager, a public officer, and employee at his written request.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Someone like to make a motion to bring us back in session, please?
This is TI, I'll make a motion to return to open session.
I'll second it. Alabas?
Councilmember Ingles?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Okay.
It's been a while since we had a closed session, I think.
Yeah, it has been. Which I like.
So, at this point in time, we've had the opportunity to meet and discuss the summary of Marcus's annual evaluation, and if someone would like to make a motion based on that discussion, now would be the time.
What kind of motion are we making? Is this for the, what is it, the cost of living? So, is it a renewal of the contract?
What date is that going to be effective on? Can we clarify that again, too?
Oh, yeah. The date of the new contract would start when?
So, the contract itself, evergreens?
Okay.
There is no date. I serve an indefinite term.
Okay.
It's the pleasure of the city council. In terms of any adjustment, was simply requesting it would have been retroactive to when we normally would have done this, albeit for COVID, which would have been the third Monday of May 2020, and I want to say that was, you guys have a calendar in front of you, but maybe the 15th or the 18th of?
The 18th would have been the third Monday.
And what does the cost of living adjustment equal to?
2.5 percent.
You're writing it down. Can you do it?
I did not get the date, though. Somebody said, please, I missed that, what you said.
It's May.
Oh, it's the 18th of May.
Okay, I will make a motion that we give the city manager a cost of living raise of 2.5 percent effective May 18th.
Councilmember King?
No.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, is there anything else this evening?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everybody on city council for your continued support of me as your city manager. This is really a special place to be. It's a wonderful community to raise a family in, it's a wonderful community to work for, or, well, for me to work for, but for people to work in as well, and I am truly lucky to be here, as I am at this point nearly halfway through my 10th year, looking at year 11 come November. There's been a tremendous amount of accomplishments that I think we all need to be very proud of. City council sitting here today, as well as councils in the past, would not have been possible for me and/or staff to be able to get these things done without the support and collaboration of the city council. And certainly, last but certainly not least, I need to thank my staff. I have a tremendous staff that are with me here today, as well as a tremendous staff that I used to have that have left due to retirements, and, you know, frankly, it's great. You know, you surround yourself with great people, and you're going to have great outcomes. So, just like to say thank you to everybody, and onward and forward.
Okay, thank you, and with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.